We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. With us this evening, we have Pastor Patricia Penya of the St. Andrew United Methodist Church to say our invocation. Ma'am, if you will come up.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here with all of you tonight. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear God, of all, we thank you for the work of this council, and we thank you for this new day and new opportunity to gather in this place, to work together for the well-being of our city of Titusville. Grant the council wisdom as they make decisions, compassion as they deal with difficult subjects, and the vision of possibilities as they envision the future of our city for the voices unheard and the well-being of all. We thank you and we honor you, God of peace, God of love. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting on February 2, 2019.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager? Oh, we have none. That's right. We just did those, didn't we? We have none from the last meeting, so we go right through that one. Boards and commissions.
Yes, sir. The Municipal Code Enforcement Board Regular Member Joseph Richardson, open classification, has submitted his resignation effective February 12, 2019. His term expires on October 31, 2019. Jacob Edwards, open classification, currently serves as the alternate member with a term to expire on October 31, 2020. However, he does not wish to be considered as a regular member. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration. Staff will continue to advertise this vacancy.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I move to accept the resignation, regular member, Joseph Richardson, from the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. I would also like to add Jacob is applied, and I believe already signed the contract, to go into the Army. So, congratulations.
Good for him. Good for him.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Did you have anything else to say?
Yeah, I just want to know, is there a deadline for accepting new applications for this open seat now?
Clerk?
Yeah, there's no deadline. We're currently advertising for it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Next item.
We didn't vote.
Oh, votes. Yeah, there we go. Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item?
Student Advisory Council, on February 12, 2019, the ninth grade representative from the North Brevard Homeschool Association, Ms. Ashley Molezy, submitted her written resignation to staff. Staff recommends the city council accept her resignation with regret. Additionally, the North Brevard Homeschool Association has no other selections or applications on file at the present time.
Okay. Yes, go right ahead.
Move to accept the resignation of the 12th grade North Brevard Homeschool Association Representative with regret.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the petitions and requests at this time?
Mayor, I'd like clerk to read the rules for you.
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens are given three minutes to speak on all items.
Okay, sir. If you will come up.
My name again is Stan Johnston. I'm a resident of the city of Titusville for about forty-seven years, I think, and I'm a registered professional engineer. Eight sixty points at a avenue. I'm here again to speak about this. I ask again about this question about who are these independent, who is this independent engineering organization that was contracted and prepared a report that reviewed the correspondence that was identified on February the 12th by Scott LaReese and Mayor Johnson? I request that because I would like to respond to whoever that is, and there was some indication that perhaps GeoSynTech would be that independent engineering organization. However, there is no GeoSynTech contract to review my correspondence. There's no GeoSynTech, there's no GeoSynTech report that reviewed my correspondence. In 2016, 2016, that's three years ago. Three years ago, GeoSynTech did a LOMAR study, included Baker Subdivision, where Dan Diesel's mother-in-law lives, and in that report, in that LOMAR study, it changed the flood zone map, as we insisted it was wrong and fabricated, or as I did, and they also removed eighty percent of the homes from Baker Subdivision from the fabricated, false flood zone elevation that was established incorrectly in 1989. So, GeoSynTech supports what I have been saying. So, I'm asking for this organization that has, that city has paid $70,000 to, which I, which Mr. Broom has been unable to find a contract to that effect, and neither has Brenda Evans. So, I'm especially asking for Mayor Johnson and Scott LaReese to come up with the names, so I can find out and talk to them and correct my mistakes.
Turn his time off, please. City Manager, you want to address that, the name of the company?
Sir, I believe the question was asked, or you had made a comment that the city had contracted a independent consultant, and it cost $70,000, which I confirmed during that meeting. That was the only comments that I recall being made at that meeting.
Okay. You have your answer, sir.
Well, who is it?
It's GeoSynTech. We've told you that repeatedly, Stan.
But GeoSynTech didn't do it. You don't have a contract with GeoSynTech that did what Mayor Johnson said. You don't have it.
You don't have it with us, sir.
You don't even, no, you don't even have it. It never happened. Mr. Broom never-
I'm not going to argue with you, sir. I'm not going to argue with you. You can make a public request.
Okay, all right. So, what I'm saying is, you're making big mistakes, and I'm being criticized, and I can't find out who these engineers who made these statements that you allege that they made, and here I am, I'm being slandered by this and saying that I'm incompetent, and yet I don't even know who these people are. I haven't seen the report. The GeoSynTech report doesn't address that at all, the LOMAR. It's 2016. That correspondence goes to 2019. What's going on? Is anybody awake here? Is anybody home? So, I'm waiting. Comments, suggestions, recommendations? Who are these people?
I already made a suggestion, sir. Make a public request, and you'll get it.
My request is that council members should call me about this.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you. I have extra time? Another minute? Thank you. I expected that.
Anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? If not, next item is the consent agenda. City Manager?
Is there any council member would like to pull any of the items on consent? Clerk, is there any cards from the public? Mayor, I'd like to read the consent agenda items for the record, and there are resolution in here that you'll need to do a roll call vote-
Yes, sir.
-upon conclusion. Consent agenda item 8A, approve staff efforts in coordinating the 2019 Red, White &amp; Boom festivals, and authorize the city manager to put in place all contracting instruments necessary for the event. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the award of the contract of BMAT's LLC of New Smyrna Beach, Florida, in the amount of $300,008.50 over four years for the installation and maintenance of floating wetland islands at the senior center in Coleman Ponds, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8C, approve resolution number 6-2019, correcting the Scrivener's error for resolution number 11, 2018, adopting amended community development fees. Consent agenda item 8D, adopt resolution 7-2019, supporting temporary closures of state roads for Friday Night Live on April 12, 2019. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the budget amendment in the amount of $33,000 to fund an on-demand stormwater project renewal and replacement, currently under the existing contracts for Hopkins Avenue pipe replacement. And consent agenda item 8F, approve advisability for staff to review the current land development fee schedule. And again, sir, you'll need a roll call vote for these items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Nothing's called. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda A through F.
I move to approve consent agenda A through F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Clerk?
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item? Ordinance's second reading. City Attorney?
We have resolution 9A, State Revolving Fund, next.
Yes, sir.
Okay. City staff, do you have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir. I'll introduce the item. In 2016, the Water Resources Department conducted a solids processing evaluation. The findings of the evaluation recommended redundancy in operational labor savings improvements for the solids handling and disposal process. In October 2017, a contract was awarded to Wright Pierce Incorporated for design bidding and construction phases services. The designs for the improvement have now been completed. To fund the construction of the recommended improvements, the Water Resources Department is seeking a state revolving fund loan. In accordance with Florida Administrative Code, the loan applicant must adopt a facilities plan outlining the necessary improvements to comply with the SRF requirements. Therefore, it is recommended the city council approve this resolution, adopting the water facilities plan for implementing the Morning Dove Water Treatment solids train upgrade as required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to participate in the state revolving fund program.
Okay. Any questions from council? I see none. We'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion? No discussion? Ask for motion on the subject, please.
I move to approve resolution number 9-2019, State Revolving Fund Resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item?
Next item is 9B, which is ordinance number 3, 2019, related to off-street parking. Ordinance number 3, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending sections 2854 use table and 28149 off-street parking lots, to amend off-street parking lots from a permitted use with limitations to a conditional use in the urban mixed-use RMU district, allowing off-street parking lots as a conditional use within the regional mixed-use RMU zoning districts, specifically the RMU 300 and RMU 400 sub-districts, and amending the standards for conditional uses, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action 7.0. On November 13, 2018, council approved advisability for staff to review off-street parking regulations. Currently, off-street parking is a limited use in urban mixed-use in urban village, with limitations that off-street parking lots are permitted only in association with other permitted and conditional uses in the zoning district. Off-street parking is a conditional use in neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and regional commercial. After review, staff is proposing that off-street parking lots remain as a limited use in urban village. Off-street parking is proposed to become a conditional use in urban mixed-use, regional mixed-use 300 and 400. In addition, staff is proposing that a traffic study may be required as part of the application, as determined by the city manager or his designee. Staff supports these changes to permit consideration of additional off-street parking lots that may be desired with the expansion of multi-use trails within the city or as needed to support other economic opportunities. During the public hearing on February 12, 2016, a member of the public requested the ordinance be amended to permit off-street parking lots as a limited use in urban mixed-use zoning district. In order to make this change, a new ordinance would have, be required, along with advertising and review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on this, your second reading of this ordinance.
Good evening, Ms. Busaka. Do you have any comments on this item?
Only if you have questions.
Okay. Council, any questions on this item?
No. Come in.
Well, we have one first. Member Stokel. She snuck right in there.
The traffic study thing, would that be something the applicant would pay for, and if so, do you know how much that would potentially charge?
That is something the applicant would pay for, and I'm sorry, I do not know, but if it were a relatively small site, which most of the existing properties in urban mixed-use are, it probably, we would probably not require a, it's only if it were a relatively large parcel. Most of these parcels have been subdivided and are relatively small.
Okay. And then, in reference to there being a potential citizen concern, there was something regarding, I think it was in the district.
Mm-hmm.
What, I guess, is your take on that? Obviously, I would not personally like to kind of re-advertise just because of the fees associated. However, if this is potentially going to create some issues for people in this district or this area of the urban mixed-use, I'd like to be a little bit more proactive while we're here, I guess.
This issue came about specifically at this moment-
Okay.
...because a property owner that fronts on Garden Street wanted to put parking on the lot in a street behind them. Now, if the zoning code did not say that the parking had to be in the same zoning district, then that would have been no issue at all. So, this, the original thought was simply, the applicant wanted, or the property owner who came to us, simply wanted to remove the words "in the district." As we talked about last time, staff had had some issues where a parking lot, especially in a residential area that was used all hours of the day and night, had really become a problem to the neighborhood, and recommended that a conditional use permit be required. In reviewing this, based on the request of the citizen that was here last time, the staff realized that we could put some additional limitations on that, which would then preclude the need for the conditional use permit, but would require re-advertising. So, I think that where, the question we need you to answer to us is, would you like to put conditions on here in such a way that, let's talk about perhaps proximity to the site that, where the parking is needed, or maximum size of the parking lot, something like that, that we could go back, that would cost the city money, but would not cost the citizens that perhaps could fit into that money?
Okay. And then, I guess, it's hard to say, because I, what would be best for the citizens, and I don't think there's any citizens that are speaking on this item here tonight. Let me ask you this. If we were to potentially pass this tonight, and then it does become an issue, would the same fee be incurred for us to re-advertise versus us bringing it back up again?
Yes, ma'am. The advertising fee's the same.
Okay. So, I guess that's kind of where I'm leaning, just since we're not seeing anybody having issues with it right now. And if, but if it does become an issue, I would like to see us potentially look at it again as to kind of, again, be more proactive with us fixing our issues without having to put that fee back on citizens unnecessarily. Thank you, Peggy.
Member Nelson?
And I think that was my thought. I was curious about what kind of limitations were they thinking about. You said they, lot size, proximity?
Lot size, right. We have right now that you're allowed to have what's a satellite parking.
Okay.
And that would be within 400 feet. So, we were thinking that we could say that these parking spaces were satellite parking, and they had to be within 400 feet of the property that they were going to serve. We also know that there's a maximum of 125% of the total parking space that, over the calculation that you need, so that we're not paving over the city.
Yeah.
And we, so we would also include that limitation, as well as perhaps a size limitation.
But for right now, my impression is, the person who has this property that's looking to have this change-
Yes.
...is not jumping up and down.
And I'm surprised that their representative is not here, because up until last week, we were told that the representative would be here and was still concerned. But I have not heard anything this week.
So, I think Sarah's right, that we go ahead and pass it as it is, and that if we need to readdress it, we'll readdress it down the road.
It doesn't cost any more money at this point.
Member Jordan?
Just a simple question. I'm going to vote for this, because I think it's the right thing to do. I understand what your concern is, and you're right. If there, it becomes a problem, we can bring it back. Just want to understand why you say 400 feet versus five.
That's the existing code for satellite parking, and I have no clue, except that we might be able to say that that is about the size of a small block. That's about four lots wide, which is, wouldn't be untypical for a block.
Vice Mayor?
Wasn't the representative here last meeting, or when this came up previously?
Yes.
And I think that they explained all the concerns that they had then.
Yes.
And I would still look at this as passing and look at a conditional use permit later, if that becomes something they wanted to do. I'm for what I've heard up here moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, if there are no further questions, I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Any further council discussion? Okay, I'll ask for a motion on this item.
I move to approve ordinance number 3-2019, related to off-street parking.
I have a second.
Second.
Member Stokel, you got that one. I have a motion and a second. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is 9C, which is ordinance number 4, 2019, related to the wetland and conservation area. This is the second reading and final public hearing. This is the second reading and final public hearing. Ordinance number four, two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance of the city of Tiesfeld, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine special districts and overlays of the code of ordinances, specifically amending Article Four Wetland and Conservation Area WCA, sections twenty-nine seventy-one intent, to clarify the intent of the overlay as related to conservation easements and other preservation mechanisms. Amending sections twenty-nine seventy-two permitted zoning districts, twenty-nine seventy-four conditional uses, and twenty-nine seventy-six official map, to include planned development PD as a permitted zoning district, and modify conditional uses within the overlay, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action seven-zero, with the additional language, quote, "the park and open space uses as unauthorized in the planned development division." The planned development and conservation subdivision standards include the requirement that thirty-five percent of the fifty percent common open space, respectively, is required. In order to encourage preservation of wetlands, it's proposed that the planned development be a permitted use in wetland conservation area overlay. This concept is consistent with the future land use policy one dash sixteen dash three, states that permitted uses within the conservation land use shall be limited to residential uses, and one unit per every five acres conservation, recreation, open space, and stormwater management systems. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any comments, Ms. Busaka?
I just wanted to say that the staff does not support the planning and zoning recommendation. We appreciate the hard work that they put in, they're very thoughtful in their discussions, but the comprehensive plan does permit the uses within the conservation land use to include not only park, and not only open space, but also recreation, stormwater management, and residential uses of one unit per five acres. So, what we would be doing is making this provision more restrictive than the comprehensive plan. And while that is a potential, I, I mean, the sta, the, it's always permitted to be more conservative than the comprehensive plan. The concern that the staff has is that this was intended to encourage preservation of wetlands by making it part of either a conservation element, or a, I'm sorry, a conservation subdivision or planned development. Our open space recreation zoning, which is consistent with the conservation land use, permits such things as golf courses and parks. Now, my idea of preserving a wetland is not putting a golf course on it. So, I feel like putting a, making this a required conservation, under a conservation easement, is actually more protection than the open space zoning category. And I would like to suggest that we are, we want to encourage that, not discourage it. And I think that although the Planning and Zoning Commission has their heart in the right place, I just am not sure that staff can support this suggestion.
Anyone else, anyone have, uh, council have any questions for Ms. Busaka? I see none. I will open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion?
Actually, you have a question?
Okay.
Um, just 'cause this is a tough one for me, could you, do you mind just clarifying that a little bit? What do they mean by "in the planned development division"? And what, it seems like they're referencing something back, because they do want to make it a little bit more restrictive. Like, what, was their goal, having more open space, having more green space?
I think what they wanted to make sure is that some, the discussion related to a planned industrial, uh, a PD, a planned development, which included industrial-
Okay.
-and they were concerned that there would be industrial in these wetlands. Well, so they wanted to ensure that it was going to just be utilized for open space. Well, the, the comprehensive plan will not allow industrial in the wetlands.
Okay.
And I think that, that their concern was because they didn't necessarily have this language in front of them, and they didn't understand that, perhaps, that the conservation land use was already very limited.
Okay, so their goal in this was to make sure that industrial didn't interfere with the wetland?
That was the, the discussion from-
Okay.
-that I saw.
Okay.
But, a, as I said, they're really, their, their intent here is to protect wetlands.
Okay. Okay, that helps a little bit, thank you.
Any other questions from anyone?
Just one real quick question.
Yes, go right ahead.
To kind of follow up there, just so I understand, we already are protecting the wetlands, meaning that this, this wording, that your concern is the wording, the park and open space uses is authorized in the planned development division? And you're concerned with that wording? Help me one more time.
Okay. We're concerned with that, because the comprehensive plan already limits that you can use, the, in the conservation land use, it shall be limited to residential uses of one unit per acre as a conditional use, conservation, recreation, open space, and stormwater management. And so, by limiting this, it's, we believe that there's the potential that we will actually discourage the use of planned development or a conservation development, which we believe is, has better, is better for a couple of reasons. One, it doesn't, um, if you were to leave it in OR, as opposed to putting a conservation easement on it, you could put a golf course there.
Yes, okay.
So, staff would rather see a conservation easement put over it. And what we'd like to do is not have a chilling effect on the use of the conservation or planned development by doing this.
Okay. So, really, by doing that, it may be a deterrent to the goal they were seeking?
Correct, and, right. And, and so, we feel comfortable that the comprehensive plan is limited enough that we will not do the wrong thing. Also, in a conserva, in the planned development, you know that comes through to public hearings, so you have the opportunity to see exactly what's going in to any, to any impacts to wetlands, which gives further reason that we want to encourage planned development, because it gives you a, a level of comfort about what that development looks like.
That gives me the clarification I need to, thank you.
Uh, city attorney?
I had to have one question for Peggy, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Under conditional uses B- Uh, we've changed, you know, public, we've, we've deleted public to allow roads and bridges.
Yes.
And associated sidewalks, utilities, et cetera, within the required right-of-way.
Yes.
So, is it staff's opinion that if you have a bridge, let's say it's a private road or a private bridge, would that be allowed, or does it have to be within the required right-of-way?
You're asking whether the bridge would be in the right-of-way?
Right, it says that you can have roads and bridges within the required right-of-way.
Well, we have a standard for how wide a road has to be. A bridge would be within that, it would, could be a public or a private right-of-way.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that we're not talking about right-of-ways that are dedicated, because the intent, my understanding was not to-
Right, it's not our intent, and if, if you think that the word "right-of-way" is an issue, but, but because there are public and private ways, you know, dedicated, right-of-ways dedicated to the public and ready, right-of-ways dedicated to the pri, to private.
Well, I was just reading in context of required right-of-way.
I see.
So, I assume this bridge and road, is somehow we'd have to say that's required. I just want to make sure the language meets your intent.
We could, we could, if you think the issue's the word "required," as long as it's within the right-of-way, we just want to make sure that they're not putting too much into the wetland. So, the, removing the word "required" is fine.
Right, so I think what I'd ask, if council does approve this, authorize us to, to satisfy your intent to maybe, whether we need required or not-
Okay.
-and give us that flexibility.
Okay, good, thank you.
Because I want to make sure we achieve your intent.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I see no other lights, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number four dash twenty nineteen, related to the wetlands and conservation area, and have staff reviewed require, required right-of-way.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, D's, city manager, city attorney?
Next item is D, ordinance number five, two thousand and nineteen, amending the future land use zoning consistency matrix. This is the second reading and final public hearing of ordinance number five, two thousand and nineteen. An ordinance of the city of Tiesfeld, Florida, amending chapter twenty-seven general provisions of the land development regulations, specifically amending section twenty-seven twenty-one comprehensive plan future land use categories, amending the future land use zoning consistency matrix to permit planned development PD zoning within conservation and downtown mixed-use land use districts, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action seven-zero. Their motion included that no more than half of the land set aside for the thirty-five percent parks and open space requirement of the PD ordinance shall be from the conservation land use. Planned development is an alternative to standard zoning districts in which the applicant and city council negotiate the standard that will be applied, such as the resulting development by promoting an improved level of amenities, creating design, environmental protection, and increased options for land owners. In order to expand the use of planned development, the proposed ordinance amends the matrix to include PD as a permitted within a conservation and downtown mixed-use land use categories. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you may have regarding this, your second reading of ordinance five dash two thousand and nineteen.
Any comments, Ms. Busaka?
Yes. Again, the staff very much appreciates planning and zoning's thoughtful review of this, but we do not understand if there are unintended consequences for this limitation as to half of the land set aside, and whether that will cause issues. We ha, as you know, we have some outstanding PDs that are currently going through the process, and we don't know whether that would impact those or not. However, we have had a number of discussions recently of planning and zoning about parks and open space. And if council feels that they would like us to do a review of the definition of open space, which is pretty flimsy at this moment, there may be a way that we can help to address the concerns that planning and zoning had, but to do it in an overall fashion. Right now, we have many different standards for parks and open space, depending on what zoning it is, it's fairly confusing. So, if, we would like to, to work toward addressing the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're just not sure this is the right way to do it.
Uh, Member Nelson, you next.
So, it sounds like this is not the appropriate way to do it, but we do need to come up with some better definitions for open space.
I, I think it would help eventually, because as we, as Brad talked about earlier, one of the issues that council may be grappling with in the future is exactly what is a park in a, in a neighborhood?
Yeah.
How big do you want it? Um, and as we're seeing more of these planned developments, they're required to have open space, well, what does that mean? I heard a discussion this morning, just be, or this evening, just because there's one bench, does that make it open space?
Yeah.
Our current code is not very strong on that. So, this may help you, as well as the public, as we're going through some of these in, discussions in the future.
I think I'd appreciate it, if we did that.
So, it, oh, uh, Members Stokoe.
Just to follow up with that, so, again, what was their concern? Like, say, one hundred percent of that was con, conservation land use, what is their, why would they not want that? What was their big, do they want a park? Do they want?
Well, the best I- The best that I can do is to, um, let you know that because of the different standards that we have for open space, I believe that the P and Z felt more comfortable with certain open space requirements and not others. For instance, we have everywhere from ten percent open space to thirty-five percent open space required. And in the case of a planned industrial park, you're only allowed to use a certain percentage of, the open space has to be active. And so, I think that they were grappling with trying to figure out some limitations that, so they couldn't feel like all of the open space would not be activated, because wetlands, we typically see those left in their natural state. And so, they, I think they were concerned that the wetlands would be degraded by considering them open space in the event that someone decided to make them into a park. Again, that is not our intent, the intent is that these wetlands will be available and concern, and protected by a conservation easement. So, I think they were trying to, again, I think they were trying to get to wetland protection.
So, yeah, okay, that's, that makes sense.
But I think-
They're trying to make sure the wetlands stayed there, plus additional green space.
Right, but I, but I think in doing that, we don't know if fifty percent is the right amount, we don't know if that's gonna harm other projects that are currently-
Okay.
-we, we just don't know, it would just kind of snatched out of the air, I think.
Okay.
And certainly, I've done that myself, so I understand how that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Does planning and zoning get with you and staff sometimes on these sort of issues? And where I'm going with this, and I, I don't mean this in a negative light at all, it's probably a very positive light. It seems like the planning and zoning in, in recent weeks has added more advisements to their votes. And my question there would be, is are they, do they speak with staff in that regard? And would it be practical for us to consider having a planning and zoning representative here to ask these questions? Because I'm hearing us more and more ask, what did they, why didn't they do this? And you're going back and reading the minutes. And if we had the chair here, or whoever they decided to send, who was at the meeting and voted that way, I had a hard time even understanding the math of that, half of the lion set aside, thirty-five percent. Um, and I'm like, I, I don't know where they're going with that. But they do seem to have more advisements with their approvals, and I'm just wondering if there's a better way we can get communicated with that.
Well, this, sometimes we get questions ahead of time. Some of the members actually come in and have briefings with the staff, especially for a complicated project. That does not preclude new items coming up at the meetings, and I think that's because they're having robust discussions. This is what I would caution about having a representative here, and that is, we all have our perspective when we provide you with information.
Okay.
I know that I do, and the, the P and Z people might be sitting there watching this tonight and saying, she didn't understand it at all, 'cause that's my perspective of what happened. We can provide you with minutes of the meetings. Now, in order to do that, we may have to give you something that is not gonna be part of the agenda, because our schedule is, we have our P and Z meetings on Wednesday nights, on Thursday at noon, we publish this. The, so the minutes are not gonna be available to put into-
I understand.
-but we can make those available to you. The other thing that I think is really helpful for staff is we actually watch the YouTube videos, so that we can see for ourselves what, what we think has happened. We ask a lot of the planning and zoning members, and if they're willing to be here, of course, we'd be happy to have them, but as you know, we ask them to meet twice a month, and sometimes we've had meetings five or six hours long. So, that's a lot to ask. They may be very willing to do it.
And I'm, I'm not even sure the, the procedural correctness of that. I simply was wondering, and again, I'm reading these more and more with advisements of, we were seven oh, but we really would like to see this. And, and that would be the only time I would think that there might be a question for someone from P and Z. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
I think it'd be helpful to either have the chairman or a designee present, if they're willing to do that, or to have the minutes, because you're right, we're getting all these advisements, more and more.
Can I make a suggestion? What about a, a flash drive of the meeting?
Oh, we, we can make any- Oh, we, we can make anything available that you'd like. Whatever's convenient.
That way, anybody who wants to reference it and can just reference that part, and it won't have to do minutes.
On the other hand, if it's five or six hours.
Well, I'm saying, you may just have a particular question.
Do you want to watch five or six hours?
What we could do-
Because we still have our agenda to read, too.
What we could do, if it was convenient, is go through and see if we can't get a minute-
Right.
So that you could say, this item starts at this time.
Yeah.
Because we have people that have to do the minutes anyway, so they're watching the, the video and listening. So they would already be able to say to you, if you are interested in Ordinance 5, 2019, it starts at minute, you know, 400, or whatever that is.
That, that would be great.
And if that would be helpful, then we could make that available to you.
We'll try that.
It'd be very easy.
That's kind of what I was saying. I mean, we can go fast forward on that and, and look at it.
Hit that button. Hit that button.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor.
It's all right. Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea.
I think it would be helpful.
If that, if that could be done, that would be very helpful. Okay, Member Jordan.
Thank you, sir. I, I'm going to discourage us having any member of another committee at this council meeting, because it definitely would cause havoc. I could see if I was on another committee, and I have my prejudices, and I may have convinced the other committee members that this is the way to go. And I come here and say all sorts of things. And those other committee members, they may have agreed with it, but they may not have agreed with having the total amount of words that's on here. So I would rather for us to do exactly what the mayor says and Ms. Busaka says. Just tell us where it is in, in the minutes and be done with it. We don't want to start a precedent. Our meetings could end up being five hours long, too. And I'm telling you, I don't think very well when it starts getting late. So we, we need to be careful what we're asking for. We might get it.
Good, good point. Vice Mayor.
And, yeah, and that's why I even said, I don't even know the correctness of that. I will say, my understanding is that there was a time, many mayors ago, I think, where the chairman of the P&amp;Z was present in, in a sort of way where you could call them up, sort of like we do staff, and ask the question. They don't, you know, get to do anything more than that. However, I still agree that we're better off, perhaps, if we just grab the, the flash drive, as you noted, and, and go from there. I, I think, you know, I haven't been here 30 years, but definitely in the recent weeks or months, there's a lot of advisements with their, their rulings and decisions, I should say.
Okay. Where, any further discussion from anyone? I don't see any. So do we do a motion on, on this, or do we?
I have the, I have the sense of the council as far as the thumb drive. We need a motion on the ordinance.
Okay. Counsel?
I'd move to approve Ordinance Number 4-2019, related to the wetland and conservation area.
Five, five, five dash 2019.
I have a motion?
We're on five.
We're on five.
Five dash 19, item B.
Five dash 2019.
That's the one, a second.
D.
I need to put my glasses back on. I'm sorry, guys.
We have a motion, that's okay. And a second, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
At this time, Mayor, if you would like, we do have a quasi judicial item coming up. I can read the quasi judicial proceeding rules.
Yes, sir.
During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table or on the side of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. Those opposed will be heard second. And those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff, representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by the council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have all persons wishing to speak before the council sign an oath card.
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No. Anyone?
No. Thank you.
Nope. Okay.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this Action 6-0. A petition easement vacation Number 1-2019 has been received from Mr. John Michelle Prudy to vacate a portion of a utility easement. The easement is a 15-foot-wide utility easement along the west side of the property line of 28 Linwood Avenue. The easement is established as part of the corrective replat of white acres, according to the map or plat thereof, and recorded as plat book number 14 pages 54 of the Public Records of Bard County. The applicant is attempting to finance the property and will be unable to do so unless the portion of the utility easement upon which the existing pool deck structure is constructed is vacated. The total area to be vacated is 10 feet wide by 52 feet, approximately 520 square feet. The total acre, the total area of the existing easement is 15 feet by 100 feet, approximately 1,500 square feet. No objections have been received regarding the request to vacate this easement.
Ms. Busaka, any comments? Counsel, any questions of Ms. Busaka? I have none. We'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are the cards on this item?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? Would you like? No discussion? Okay. I'll accept the motion?
Move to approve easement vacation Number 1-2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And I'd also like to add Resolution Number 8, 2019.
Does that, does the motion hold? Motion has that? Second hold?
That's me.
Oh, that's you. That's the wrong way, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign? What?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have no roll call down there.
Yeah.
But that's, okay. All right, roll call, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this Condition 6-0. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for recreational and commercial amusement indoor use for the Tidesville Mall. The requested CUP, if approved, will the applicant to the entirety of Tidesville Mall. The Tidesville Mall is located at 3550 South Washington Avenue with regional commercial RC zoning district. No expansion of the existing building is proposed as part of this request. The use will utilize existing parking ingress, ingress points for vehicular access to the property. Staff recommends you conduct a public hearing for conditional permit CUP 1-2019 to allow recreational and commercial amusement indoor use within the Tidesville Mall located at 3550 South Washington Avenue. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the CUP.
Any comments?
The, the staff is supportive of this condition, additional use permit.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions of staff? I hear none. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards?
Yes, sir, we have one card. It's Lisa McCotter.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi.
Name and, name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Lisa McCotter, 3675 Muirfield Drive. And we're requesting the CUP over the property because as general manager, I have repeatedly have people coming in. I've actually been here twice, once for myself and once for a tenant, for a, a conditional use permit for indoor recreation. I have many people that come and want to open businesses that would fall under this permit. And so I would like to just express my appreciation to staff, to specifically Ms. Busaka. When I came to her with the questions about a CUP, how many, how many can you have on one property? Would there ever be a limit? Would there, it's the same information over and over again. We already got two in one year. And so this was presented that, that we come and do one, a blanket over the entire property. And I just really appreciate that because I felt like it was staff helping to solve a problem for, you know, our community. And so, thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms.? Ms. McCotter?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Lisa. I see no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, any other cards, clerk?
Yes, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? Vice Mayor.
Just briefly, I, I, you know, my hat's off to your efforts there, and I really think that what I'm hearing here is a, a proactive approach to possibilities. And I think that that's very, very wise. And I, I think that it's going to be real easy to support this and support your efforts there. But the fact that you guys are so out in front saying, hey, this could happen, and this has been happening, let's be prepared for this. So I, I hope that's a, a good answer for you guys.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll call, I'll close the public hearing. I did that. Motion, I'll call for motion.
I may have to put my eyes on for this.
All right.
Okay. Move to approve conditional use permit Number 1-2019 for the Tidesville Mall.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed? Same, same. Passes unanimously. Ordinance's first reading.
Item 10A is Ordinance Number 6, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Tidesville, Florida, amending ordinance Number 23, 2015, which granted an ad valorem tax abatement to Paragon Plastics, Inc. to reflect the company's change of name to Paragon Plastics, LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
City Manager?
Yes, sir, if I could, we have an administrative item from the last item that the clerk would like to bring up.
I just want to clarify, on the CUP, there was a condition in the staff report that your motion included that.
What was the condition?
What was the condition?
Submit a parking analysis for review and approval prior to a suits of a BTR with the cumulative area of the recreation and commercial amusement uses meet or exceed 36,000 square feet.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant stated they had no issues with that.
Is that included in the motion?
That would be included in the motion. I would have-
Second hold?
They were looking over there again. It was me. Yes.
Okay. In that case, we've already voted, so. All right.
Now, back to 10A, which the city attorney has read. This is your first reading of Ordinance Number 6-2019. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for March 12, 2019. And Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on Ordinance 6, 2019.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka? Open the public hearing, in case anybody wants to talk on this item. Coming up. Next item, please.
Next item is 10B, rezoning Number 4, 2018, Riverwalk Apartments Plan Development Rezoning, and Ordinance Number 7, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Tidesville, Florida, amending ordinance Number 5, 1993, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present multifamily medium-density residential R2 zoning district with the planned development PD zoning district for certain properties approximately 21.03 acres in size, having parcel ID numbers 22352600504 and 22352600518, located on the east side of US Highway 1, approximately one-half mile south of the intersection of US Highway 1 and River Edge Drive, providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled to be heard on March 12, 2019. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for two. The approval included a recommendation to change the labels from future development, on the future development areas listed on the project to open space. This is your first reading of Ordinance 7-2019. Ms. Busaka is available to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Any questions for Ms. Busaka? Member Jordan?
Yeah, just, can you give, give me an explanation of why the planning and zoning wanted the word "open space"?
I would be happy to read to you from the minutes of the meeting. And the issue was Chairman, well, see if I can... Member, let me see here. There was some discussion about the idea of the future development. Right now, the project, it has utilized all of its density that is permitted. And there was some concern that the words "future development" there was not correct in that there was no future development that was going to be permitted because the density had been maxed out on the site. So in discussing that, there was some suggestions that perhaps the zero density could be shown there. Finally, the, the member here asked if it could be labeled "open space." There were several discussions about what the intent of "open space" was and when the discussion, when the motion was made, it was to approve the rezoning with the recommendation that the label be changed from "future development" to "open space." I, if we can go back, the density under the medium in density land use is 10 units an acre. They have 21 acres. They have 210 proposed units. The only way that additional density or development could be considered on this property is if there were a change to the future land use in, in a future. My understanding is that the developer felt that by labeling this as future development, they were trying to be transparent, to say, we may want to come back one day. I think that there was some concern that by showing it on the map, it was kind of authorizing the future development to occur. That cannot happen. This is a master plan that's approved, and any changes to the master plan, which is significant, must come back through the process. So again, I think that the concern was, we want to make sure that everybody understands what's going to happen on that property. Staff has some concerns about designated it as "open space" because "open space," as we're learning, has some very specific meaning to it. And so there are other options. One of them is simply not to label anything at all. That way, there's not a misconception as to how it can be used. It's simply vacant property. That would have to come back through the process, should that change.
All right, I, I actually have a problem with, you know, just using the words "open space," because what I just heard was someone came up with that and just to say, and I think it was more of trying to protect because they assumed certain things was going to happen. But what you just explained was that they'll have to come back But what you just explained was that they'll have to come back because they already have the density. So why are we trying to unnecessarily put words in when it's just unnecessary?
And it could cause confusion later. My rule of thumb is that I'm just one bus getting, you know, running me over, and then somebody else has to figure out what I'm doing. And so I like it to be clear. And I believe that that, while well-intended, has the opportunity to confuse in the future.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And I agree with what you're saying. Member Nelson.
I agree with Mr. Jordan and Mayor that we've got to just take that out. I was also concerned about, well, two things were bothering me. The number of parking spaces. We're talking about 1.1 and 1/2 parking spaces per unit, and that seems very, very low. And the other thing that I was, crossed my mind, was we're talking about other modes of transportation, and there's an area there that looks like would be a great place for a covered bus stop.
They have volunteered, as part of the development, to put covered bike place in there. It's possible that they would be willing to do something like that. The developer's representative is here this evening, and I'm sure would be happy to talk about that.
Okay. I'm curious about that, and I'm curious about the parking.
Again, I would suggest that the engineer on the project could be helpful. I will tell you that when it comes to multifamily, the parking standard that we have of 2.5 is probably excessive.
How do you feel about 2.0?
I'm not a traffic engineer, so...
Don't ask you.
Yeah, it's, the engineer, now, this is first reading, so I would be happy to bring this back to our...
Please.
Yes, to have that. My understanding is that our engineer has reviewed this, but I will confirm that and see if there are any input.
Okay, okay.
And then while I have my mic on, there's also a question about a fence and a buffer, and the fence being to the inside of the project, and then a wooded buffer being to the outside of the fence.
On the apartment side or on the other side?
It is on the east side. And if you will, so the concern that that was, that arose from staff is that we will have a buffer of about 75 feet wide that will be on the other side of the fence.
Okay.
And the concern, we contacted code enforcement, and they said that having a buffer that's on the other side of a fence could cause all kinds of activities that people do not intend nor desire in that buffer. Having, having the 75-foot-wide buffer, most of which was left in its, or some of which is left in its natural state, inside the fence allows more control so that you don't have undesirable... Now, my understanding is that the neighbors are the ones who requested that they would have the buffer rather than the fence up against them.
Okay.
But that is one issue that you may want to think about. This is not a final decision tonight, but that's one issue that staff has identified could be problematic for the neighbors, where they could end up with this no man's land in there, that they may not really like having that. I think the applicant is willing to work with the neighbors, but I'm just not sure that the neighbors are going to like that once it's in place.
Okay, okay.
I don't see your light now. I think, I guess I was covered. Okay. This is first reading, so if we, if anyone desires, we can have Mr. Honeycutt come up.
We have two cards.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any more cards?
Yes, Mr. Honeycutt and then Laura Ward.
Okay.
Good evening. Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. Originally, I was going to say, I was here to answer any questions, and I thought I would go home quickly. First of all, as far as labeling of the undeveloped portion of the site, it doesn't matter to us because no matter what, we have to come back. And the whole idea was that in the future, it could be that the land use has changed, and we could come back and have future development there. Probably not to label it anything, as staff suggested, it might be the best thing, but we're open to what, whatever you think you feel is best. Let's see, parking. There'll be a parking study to justify the number of parking spaces required. And it'll follow the Urban Land Institute standard, and it'll depend a lot on the number of one-bedroom, two-bedroom. And so I think on there, we had a, we had a range from like 1 and 1/2 to 1.9 or something. We recently did a project where it was actually 1.3, and that's because it was a senior and, you know, single bedrooms, too. And so it depends on the study, but we did put a range on there. 2.5, if you have a lot of three bedrooms, might be required. That's two is what's required, plus a half for visitors, is the way it comes up with 2.5. The fence location. Staff has said that they would like to have the fence on the property line all the way on the east side. We met with the neighbors, and from previous rezonings, they've indicated they'd rather have a green area. And so we had agreed to 25-foot undisturbed area, and then there's another, I think, 25 feet that could be partially disturbed. And then the fence was located 45 feet within the property line. And so that gave the residents on the area 45 feet of mostly a wooded area. And they said they'd rather have that than to have the fence on the out, where they see, they'd rather see the green area. So we've agreed to that. And so it's up to you to tell us where to put the fence.
Can you rephrase that?
Mayor, can I ask you if it's up to us to, on where to put the bus stop?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, and you mentioned a bus stop. Sorry about that. We don't have any plans to have a bus stop there. There are bus stops already along the road there. First of all, you don't just put a bus stop in, you have to get Space Coast Area Transit to say they need one and to prove it there. So a bus stop in, and you have, well, actually, you don't have to get DOT permission, as long as the jurisdiction you're in approves it.
Any other questions of Ms. Honeycutt? I see none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the next card, please, clerk.
Laura Ward.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, sir and counsel. Laura Ward, River Edge Drive. Our residents there have indicated that they would prefer the fence to not be in their backyard. They would prefer to have green area, undisturbed. There's a lot of kind of big trees there and things like that. So I'm just going to hand you out this, this is what...
You can just give it to me, ma'am, and I'll pass it on.
Thank you. As far, I can talk to Peggy later about why the staff thinks it would be better the other way. But this is what our residents have asked for through two different... If you'll recall, this project was before you, the exact same project, requesting an R2 zoning change. And we all went through all of this with the same thing for an R2 zoning change. And they got that. Now we're back for a PD zoning change. And this, just to say out front, that the PD designation, when it's explained to me, it's to be, oh, Mrs. Ward, we're going to get more protection for open areas and the wetlands. And I understood it somewhat out there on Park Avenue because they're dealing with the wetlands. But now here's a project where there's really, this wetland, it wasn't going to be impacted any more, any differently with the previous project under, under R2. So the, for this project, it seems to me that the PD just is a wet unit, all of which I'm okay with, but what did we get in exchange for that? And I haven't figured out yet what we did get in exchange for the 12 more units. And I was at the P&amp;Z meeting, and the big issue, the big discussion was about, you know, you've got some things on here labeled "future development," and they were areas that are clearly part of the project, but they're being counted as open space in order to increase the density. So it was kind of like, well, which is it? If it's going to be counted as open space to add density to your project, then you can't come along and chop it off later and sell it. Well, I understand what Peggy's saying, that you have to go back through, but that was what the discussion was over. And also over being able to count the lake as open space because it was a required element since it's a retention pond. But may I have just a...
Yes, how many, how much more time we need?
Can I have like two or three minutes?
Can we go for two?
Two, I'll go for two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll take two, anytime.
We have a second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say yes. That's the unanimous, so you go ahead.
Thank you. So when we come back to, or, on March, then these are the things that we're wanting. We had 50 feet of the equivalent of buffering between us and the project when it was R2. We want that again. We want 20, the first 25 feet of it, which is up against the residents on the east side, the first 25 feet, we want that in a conservation easement so that it can't be disturbed. We want the next 25 feet, we want to be able to keep the big overstory trees that are in there. So this 20-inch specimen tree, I mean, it should be any overstory tree variety greater than 15 feet in height. So we can talk more about that at the next one. Addison Creek area, Addison is, Creek is right there, down there on that point. And we would like that to be placed in a conservation easement as well, and we would like it to be fenced off from access by the project. They're putting a fence all the way around their project because there's no access from this development to River Edge Drive. If they want to come on River Edge Drive, they need to get in the car, drive a quarter of a mile, or a tenth of a mile, I think it is, and then come back up on River Edge Drive in the car, not walk through to get to River Edge Drive. That's the main thing for us, is to prohibit any foot traffic from this project onto River Edge Drive. And, oh, the fence, major importance, because you can see the fence from...
One more minute?
May I have one more minute? You can, you'll be able to, oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yeah, thank you for one more minute. You'll be able to see the fence in certain parts where it's kind of thinned out. And I know the developer wants to give us a plastic white fence. Well, we want a substantial fence that cannot be easily kicked over, knocked down, so that the foot traffic can come through. And we have an example of the kind of fence we want down there on the new subdivision that's going in on our street. They used some sort of a fiberglass. It's not a wall, but it's a substantial fence. And, you know, it's, we would like that instead of the plastic thing that I'm sure is what Rodney's client wants to buy. So that would be our, that's, that's what we were going to be talking about in March.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you.
Any more questions? I see none. Thank you. Okay. There's no vote on this, but I'll, any other cards on it?
Yes, sir.
I'll close the public hearing. And counsel, any further discussion? I see one. Member Stokoe.
Ms. Busaka, this one's for you. Just, do we, with this P&amp;Z's recommendation, do we ever, with this particular development, just label an area "open space" like that? Is that normal? To me, this seems not nor, I don't know.
We, we have, the open space is delineated in the information that is in your document. I believe it's shown in yellow. It's on page 218. And it's the area that abuts the fence, and it includes the area around the lake because there is a walking trail around that lake.
Okay.
So do we off, do we take vacant property that has no development and just label "open space"? Typically, we do not.
Okay.
And I think that part of the concern was that because of the fence and the location of it, the open space that's delineated on this property is actually not included so that the people who live in the subdivision can access it.
Okay.
And so part of the concern was, well, we don't have open space in here, but it's not because the applicant didn't designate it, it's because of the location of the fence.
Okay. And just to clarify a little bit more, so say we see this vacant area, they wanted to sell that, in theory. Nobody, if they purchased that, they could not build on it unless they came to council or what, because of the density requirement for that area and the surrounding area?
Because this is all under one master plan.
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. That clarifies. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to reopen the public hearing because this is unusual for us to have this much in, but I should ask the applicant representative if he has any other comments or rebuttal, so.
Excuse me? What was the question?
No, the question is, usually in these procedures, we allow the applicant to rebut anything anybody has said, if they desire to do that. And if you don't, that's okay. But I would, and I would ask you another question, if you don't mind. Will you be meeting with the, the other, the people again?
No, I don't plan on it, no, I think.
You don't think that's a good idea?
Oh, if, I don't know of any reason to. I'm, we've already met.
Well, there are, it appears to me there are things for discussion, but that's up to you. I'm just asking.
No, we're, we're ready for the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question for...
Wait.
It's a simple question.
You thought it was going to be easy.
No, it really is a simple question. Did you get a copy of this?
I don't know what that is.
Oh, this is what she...
Oh, no.
You didn't get that?
Hey, Rodney, I got another one from staff.
Oh, she has one for you.
You have one? She has one? You have one, Ms. Ford?
All right.
Mayor, can I also ask Rodney a question, just for clarification? Is the fence, if, as requested, that's going to put your actual required open space outside of your development? Is that true?
Not completely.
No, in some areas.
Some of the open space will be outside the fence.
And so what's the purpose of the open? I think that's, that's a question. So you might want to hear from staff, you know, what's the required, what's the open space to serve? Why do we have it? And can it serve its purpose if it's outside the fence? I think that was what staff was getting at. And I think that was part of P&amp;Z's discussion is...
Thank you.
If you read the code, the open space is intended to be utilized for both recreation and as a buffer. So the buffer perspective is the one that the neighbors are focused on because they want to see that vegetation up against their property. If you think about the open space as being primarily a recreational or an amenity to the multifamily, then once it's outside of the property, that may not be as much of an amenity. For instance, the, in my neighborhood, I walk my dog around the retention pond. So the idea that there's a walkway around this retention pond is something that I would use and would be part of active open space.
Okay, thank you, sir. No vote on this, so we'll go to, oh, did you have, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
I do want to clarify the fence thing again. I forgot something else I wanted just to make sure I understood. The fence, as it's proposed by the developer at this time, is to... The fence, as it's proposed by the developer at this time, is to be on the inside of that open space or on the outside of the open space?
It's to be on the inside, so to the, if...
Right up to the apartments?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, closer to the apartments and farther away from the property.
Okay.
Line of the neighbors.
Does that open space need to be maintained by anybody? And if so, whose responsibility does that fall on?
It will be the owner, under the ownership of the apartment complex.
Okay.
25 feet of that will be left in its natural state.
Okay.
So that may be easy to maintain. There will also be a portion of it that there will be some disruption of, the applicant has agreed to maintain the larger trees.
Okay.
But, so, but that, in that area, there will be some maintenance perhaps that will be required. Because I believe they're going to have to make, they've got a ditch there that, and they may have to do some work. And of course, just putting the fence in will require some clearing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Next item is 11, Old Business, item A.
Yes, sir. Staff has a PowerPoint presentation to review the draft concept provided to City Council back in 2016 on the design and verbiage of State Road 406 pedestrian bike bridge overpass. This is the Garden Street one. And Mr. Jim Thomas is here to provide that presentation to council.
Oh, hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jim Thomas, Community Relations, and here in regards to the bridge design. We have a PowerPoint that has several slides. You've, you've seen every last one of them before, but we're going to go through them real quick. And then there's some from probably two years ago that were the original just plain mockups, trying to generate ideas for signage. The last slide is what you haven't seen, and that shouldn't take long, but that's what I've learned since the last time we met. So we discussed the importance of the 3,400 miles of trails converging here in Titusville, along with being named a trail town. In addition to that, we talked about Gateway to Nature and Space and how important that's going to be in the future. You got the only access to Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge right here in Titusville, even though it's called Merritt Island. You got Cape Canaveral, the Canaveral National Seashore, Black Point Drive and all the rest. And that's very valuable property. You can't buy that. We talked about the verbiage that was talked, that was originally suggested, which was Titusville Trails on the west, on the east side, and Welcome to Gateway, Nature and Space on the east side, which means you're entering off, say, 95 going towards...
West side.
Sorry?
You said east side, it's west side.
Good call. East, west, thank you. And after, after we came up with some designage, there was some branding going on with Linda Brandt, the Chamber and the City, the Titusville font that you see out there in the lobby. It's the, we nicknamed it Zoo Font because some of the font means different things, like birds, that kind of stuff. But, and then the Titusville Trails Subcommittee worked with a vendor in regards to the design that was, was eventually presented. And you can see that, that is the west side, as Mayor Johnson said. And that's what we were kind of concentrating on last time because if we were only to do one side, that's 50% of the funding. The other side was this Titusville Trails. And then what we're about to look at, these is the price, if you did both sides, the price for each side. And then here's what we used for generating ideas last time. This was somewhere up in Massachusetts, a local sculptor did a lot of work in that town. He did this, which kind of represents community, family, that kind of stuff. You guys really liked it back then. The thing is, this was way up north. Even if he agreed to do it for us, it would be substantial amount of money to do that. That's half the battle. You'd have to transport it down. You'd have to get engineering to attach that if you even could. I don't know what they did up there, but I did talk to a gentleman a few years ago. There's the other side of his. You see a train because it's, you know, probably a rails-to-trail type of thing. And then this was another design that we showed. Unfortunately, with this design, there's absolutely no way to make that to DOT standards as it currently exists. Not only does it go above the bridge, it goes below the bridge. There's elements there that even the contractor said he would want us to change if we did so. I'll give you a little better view of that. I don't know if you can see that as well, but he had some issues with the Welcome To being not very visible, if that's, if we wanted Welcome To. Again, going below the bridge. There was several things that were problems with that. But he never did get into designing that. That was his comments to me several years, year, year and a half ago. And this was another rendition of it. This one still has some issues with going above and below. And that was on the east side heading west, similar to what we kind of have right now that they were suggesting. Now here's what I want to show you. This is the new slide. Now, as we talk about this, we can get to it really quickly, but there's the, whoops, there's the sign we're talking about currently. So if you took that sign and you did it just the way it is, it's 99,000. If you were to take the Titusville font and color that just like it is, as you've seen it out in the lobby, it's a couple thousand more. That's just painted signage. So you have your Gateway to Nature, but your Titusville would be the multicolored. And that is just a sheer estimate by the contractor that was designing for us. And it's, it's by no means an exact figure. So then you see the next thing, which is Titusville illuminated, face lit. That's what you see when you see lit signs up on the highway. And that would run about another 9,300. And that's in addition to the 9,900. Now, if you were to, if you wanted to do something like adding a palm or a rocket, now this is what was given to me. I was chasing this down for the last week. I just got that this morning, which it looked like they were suggesting by their email to remove Welcome To and add, and the reasoning behind that was, you're already in Titusville. Welcome To is nice, it's welcoming, but they're saying if you wanted a palm and a sun or a palm and a rocket, it's to be painted. It's going to be another 25,000 to put that in there. To be illuminated, just like Titusville, you're looking at another approximately 33,000 on top of the 9,300. So, you know, you can do the math there. I was going to do it for you, but I figured you guys are all pretty smart. And again, that's, that's based on this sign right there. Not there, not there, back here. So that's based on that sign. So you, on, and one option, you drop the Welcome To, you got the Titusville lit, multicolored. You could have a palm, a rocket, a palm, a sun. You still have your Gateway to Nature and Space. Or you would just have Titusville backlit. I don't know if they would, even if somebody wanted to put it out, I don't know what the procedure would be first, whether you'd get the okay from DOT or you'd put it out for bid. That's not my wheelhouse.
Member Stokel has a question.
I don't know if it's a question, just kind of some comments on it. Designs before, so, and I was like, oh, where were those? Me personally, I'm not a fan of the white signs. I really like Slide 11, the one that doesn't fit the standards as of right now with the palm tree and the rocket. Moving forward, and I know this is pricey for the time being, yes, if we are going to do this, I would like to do, I would want it to be nice. If we're going to invest that much money in it, I don't know if we're there at this time with our current budget. But, and then I'm going to talk more about this under the reports, but I do think that as we've mentioned corridors before and as the trails are coming here, I do also think that there could be a cost of ugly or not attractive too, that we should also keep in the back of our minds. Again, I don't know how you guys feel about it. I'm not particularly a fan of the white sign. I like the palm tree, I like the rocket. It shows kind of who we are. It would be something that I feel like we could be proud of potentially. Obviously, it would have to be scaled down if it were to go out for bid. And again, I don't know if we're there yet financially, but if we were there or were interested in putting it out for bid, that would be my favorite design that's presented.
Member Nelson.
I have to say, I agree with you, Sarah. I like that. But I think we do need to put it on the shelf for, for a year or so. And then when we do it, let's do it right. I'd rather do that than just sort of throw something out there that's not quite what we want. So that would be my vote.
Anyone else? I don't see anybody else saying anything. I'd have to go away, go, go with what you said. There's, there's a lot of things to do with this that says, let's put it off for a while.
Yeah.
It's my opinion. Anybody else have an input?
I would agree. I would probably defer away from the word Member Stokel used, the ugly, because I didn't, I don't think any of those designs were ugly. I'm not sure. I'm a big fan of the whites on there, colored light and white's not bad. I think in the end, we want to have something that's visible, we're talking about when they leave home, trees, etc. Might do that. But I think we're going to have to put that back until it's more affordable with some of the things we're going to discuss coming up on in our budget that are much more important than that right now. I think it's a good idea. I think that we just have to be able to afford it down the road.
Any other?
So my national emergency is not going to work.
You what?
It ain't good or bad, I said it doesn't work.
National emergency would work.
Good night, Jim.
All right. 2018, in the height overlay, on December 5, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously passed a motion to ask staff and city council to review the ordinance, number 50, 2018, regarding several issues. However, prior to advertising the amended ordinance, staff is seeking input on the issue of requiring either a conditional use permit or planned agreement, or a development agreement for projects above 75 feet. The application cost for a conditional use permit or development agreement is 17, or correction, $1,575 plus $8 per acre and $8 per lot dwelling unit plus legal advertising costs. Staff is recommending council provide staff direction on the review of ordinance 50, 2015 regarding height and of 75 feet. Any other questions? Then I'll help you with this one.
Any comments before the questions?
Oh, I'm here to answer questions.
Okay. Member Jordan.
I'm not understanding why we need to do this.
When planning and zoning ask us to review the ordinance 50, 2018, there were some things that we agreed that we could be more precise in our language. So we want to come back and clean that up. But the one recommendation that they made that would require a specific way to advertise a conditional use permit, because if it's a conditional use permit, it gets a different kind of advertising than if it's not. And we didn't want to put council into a place where they were considering an ordinance they didn't want to consider because we had advertised it in that way. So that's why we're coming to you to ask you how you would like to us to advertise this so that you can consider the ordinance you want to consider. So the question is, do you want to make an applicant go through either a development agreement or a conditional use permit to get additional height? Or the code currently says you can get additional height if you do certain things, if you have a mixed-use development, if you provide access to the riverfront. So there are limitations to height because, until you meet certain specifications. The Planning and Zoning Commission felt that while that was nice, it's not the same as going through the public hearing process required by a conditional use permit or development agreement.
All right, let, let me just say this for the record. I think you're opening up a bucket of worms if you start talking about height again. It sounds like to me we have the right wording in place if I want to go higher than what the requirements are. So why would we want to open something up to cause a lot of people to come out here? I haven't experienced that yet on council, and I like to delay it as long as possible. But my vote would be for you to, if you could review it without having to advertise, once you start talking about height and, you know, you get everybody out here and they want to reduce what we have.
The proposed changes are relatively minor, and I would consider them to be in general cleanup.
Okay.
To be more precise language. So the, the concept of the height would not necessarily be at discussion. It would simply be saying, when the staff used the word "commercial," it meant this, not industrial. It's that level of concern.
So what words are you looking for from us?
We, I just, our staff wants to know if you want this to be considered when you have additional height in the overlay that the applicant would have to go through either a conditional use or a development agreement.
Yes. Okay. That's, that's my desire anyhow.
That you do want them to go through that.
Isn't that either or? Or that's one, one suggestion?
That's one suggestion, right.
That's what I heard.
Right. But if, if you don't want that, if you want the ordinance as it stands, then you tell us, do not advertise the conditional use permit or the development agreement requirement, and we'll go through and provide you an ordinance that just cleans up the language of what you already have.
And that's my suggestion, which is clean up the language.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson.
And I would agree with Mr. Jordan. We, we had a fairly intense conversation about the height ordinance. It's restricted to certain areas of our community where it could be considered appropriate. And I think we're just, I don't want to go back and, and try to reinvent the wheel. I would agree it needs some cleanup, but other than that, I wouldn't go back.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, this is one of those things when you speak third, there's not a lot to say, which is great, because I agree. I think that you would, I was pleased with where we were. And if you feel like there's some cleanup needed, you noted earlier that if you don't go to the other areas, the CUP, for example, you, there are, there are ways to increase your height if you do certain things, and that's already set into the ordinance. I am pleased with that without going another step and re-advertising and starting all over again.
No. I, it would, it, hey. It would seem that we're, we're all in accord, even those of us that haven't spoken yet.
Mayor, you do have one card.
All right. Let me guess.
Better cruise.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Address for the record.
Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue. And so I represent Candy Point Marina. We're very happy with the ordinance that's passed, albeit some minor modifications. When this was a advisability, that's what I said, no problem with that, but we'd be opposed to adding another level of risk for height by requiring a conditional use permit or a development agreement. And so I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? No. Thank you, sir. Do we, do you have directions? We don't need to have a motion or anything? You got it. Okay. That's good. Very good. Petitions and requests from the public. Would you like to get up here, Rodney? I, I don't, oh, wait, wait, we have a law enforcement...
That was what you...
Mayor and council reports. You have my report. Anybody from council wish to speak?
I got one real quick one.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that it's impressive to see the parish medical site over in the landings take off. I went over to the, what's it called? The Devita Kidney Dialysis Care. Some of you may have been there because it was kind of a walk-in and walk-out, so I may have missed you. But I was there and I thought that was, I have some relatives who have some of those kidney issues, and it's very impressive. And if someone out there does have a kidney issue, take heart in that you don't have to do the big traveling they've had to do in the past. Very impressed with that. And by coincidence, the very next morning, I had MRI on my knee, a very pleasant experience. And again, the, the location and logistics of things and the professionalism of everything. But it's like, wow, who would have ever thought? So I just wanted to kind of comment on that. So I just wanted to kind of comment on that, that the parish medical aspect of the landings has really taken off.
Great, thank you. Member Jordan.
I only have four things, but I'm taking one off.
So you have three.
Actually, and I have to say this, because at the last meeting, I had a question about rubbish rules, and as I was experiencing what we did today, I understand and I'm very appreciative.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for saying that.
Well, I had the experience of having a phone call from.
Oh, sorry about that. I'm new. I had the experience of, of having a couple of phone calls from the media this week, and just wanted to have a, a short discussion about our process as far as talking to the media when they ask questions or they ask you to call back. My assumption is that the mayor is the spokesperson for the council and/or the city manager if, if things come up. But just want us to be consistent, because I don't want a member of the media call me and I don't return the call, and then another council member does return the phone call is going to make me look a little foolish. And just want to make sure we are all in one accord as far as how that is supposed to be handled.
I don't think we ever made, I never heard a specific rule. Generally, people do say the mayor speaks for the council, but I'm going to ask the city attorney, do we have any particular directions on that?
Other than what you said, the only caution I would have is remember that individual council members can't speak for council. So in other words, if a, if a.
I can.
Right. If, if a newspaper or, or TV station called and they want to know what is council's feelings about, an individual council member couldn't say "council believes" unless you've actually voted on that and given them the authority to speak for council.
And that includes the mayor, by the way.
Right, anybody, right. Because you'd have to, you couldn't speak for council.
Just like you can give yours.
So I would caution against taking a position on behalf of council because that can't be done by individual members.
Okay.
I, I was about to say the same thing. My experience, it goes quite a few years back, both here and other position with the city. Dealing with the press can be very difficult. I'm saying this to everybody, that sometimes you think you're saying something that is pretty clear and it doesn't come out quite that way.
Right, yeah.
So you got to be pretty cautious and, and generally make sure you, if you kind of know the person and dealt with them before, that's one thing. If it's somebody you've never seen, had never spoke to before, then you never know what's going to happen, is what I'm saying. So I, if you do speak to them, and you, you are allowed to do that for yourselves, and just be cautious, and don't, sometimes they have a way of throwing that belt out, out there and, and just, you know, you don't even know you're getting into it and all of a sudden you're in.
One other comment. Also remember, when it comes to quasi judicial or public hearing items, it would not be appropriate for council to take a position on items you haven't voted on and heard in a public hearing with the evidence. So just remember, because if they want to get your input on an item that's coming before you, it'd be better to reserve comment until after council has taken a position and voted. So you, your comments are based on the evidence at the hearing.
And that also could be violation of the sunshine law.
We don't, we don't do any violation. Okay, that was number two. Number three, we do have two people who will be getting, or being inducted into the Business Hall of Fame, that's Brian and Donna Scott, this weekend, and certainly want to take our hats off to them and congratulate them for being part of that. That's going to happen Saturday night, and we'll be attending that. And the last thing, the governor actually said he sent a letter to the president requesting that the Space Force Combatant Command, I guess is what it's called, be placed.
Space Command.
Yeah, Space Command be placed at KSC. And there was also, I think Commissioner Snardi was requesting to be placed at Patrick. I'm suggesting that once they get cleared up, whichever way that Brevard County wants to go, that we have the mayor, we agree on some type of resolution to say we, we're in support of that, because it definitely needs to be in, in Brevard County for sure, so.
That certainly would be appropriate.
Okay. And that was my last thing. Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. Member Stokel.
I have about 10 items. Okay, so, okay, maybe just four. Okay, I'm going to try and make them quick. Wanted to touch on, and went to the Tourism and Transit Summit meeting that Mayor went to as well. It was my first time to attend, and I would just encourage you guys next year, it sells, it sells out, it's a free event, but it was probably one of the coolest things, I was able to attend. The guest speaker, he wrote a book called Love Where You Live, and it was just really encouraging to kind of think outside the box. He had some really cool ideas, I just wanted to share a couple with you. And some of them we were actually kind of doing, which I thought was fantastic. Seattle, they were doing this thing called Rainworks, where they were doing stenciling, reverse stenciling on their sidewalks. So when it rained, it had the shadow of whatever was there, which Seattle rains all the time. So, um, another one I think was.
And you know, we're actually doing that.
Yep, yeah, and that was something I found out was really cool, Tim Ford doing it with the CRA, yep, mhm. Another one was, I think Greenville, I want to say, South Carolina, and this was actually from, I want to say, a high schooler. He had this idea to put these little bronzed mice throughout their downtown area in random locations, and it became something where people come and visit and they try to find the mice, they're now named, and it cost them like $1,700. And it was just a kid, and now it's become, yeah, very popular. They, he talked about murals, he talked about adult swings, just creating places for people just to kind of congregate to. So it kind of excited me. Oh, he also had a wayfinding signs that said like, "two blocks, you'll find this," or, and it just kind of got me thinking about more so items for our CRA to potentially look at when we talk about the trails, little things to make our area a little unique. And I like how, you guys probably already know, the murals and the finding the 3-2-1, we're doing some of those things, but I don't know, I'm going to kind of brainstorm more. Kathy was there from GTR, Holly Carver was there, so hopefully, yeah. Another thing, as I've graduated and have so much more free time, I've been spending more time at the city, which has been great, and so I just wanted to share with you guys, I've been setting up meetings with different departments now that I've been in for two years, just to increase my understanding. So I've already met with finance, the planning department, HR, I have some more on there, but I have just been thoroughly impressed with our staff, as I'm sure you guys have with your interactions. Just the things that we're doing for our employees, things we're doing for our citizens, it's just been amazing just to watch. So I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, thank you to our city manager, I'm just blown away by everything. Also, as I've been kind of like looking back, obviously when we got on, we were given.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
On that one.
Yes, definitely.
Because it brought to mind some other things. You're absolutely right, it was great, and I sent a, one of the books, they're just small books, to the city manager, and by the day, upon the day it was over, he already read it.
Yep.
And lots of good things. And, and some of the things were, like our, the raps we recently did, that would have fit in the, the thinking that they, they were saying there. Inexpensive things that can really be powerful. I also want to say that at the beginning of the meeting, which was very interesting, the speaker, I cannot remember his name.
Oh, yes. Peter, some last name.
Peter. I, I don't remember it either, but he spoke about our mall. And what he said was exactly on target. He said, he was talking about people doing things that are innovative to help their community, and of course, the mall was, was never an economic development issue, frankly, it's a redevelopment issue. But it was at a time, as you all remember, where 60 Minutes, and he mentioned this too, 60 Minutes had done a thing on us, saying that we're going to blow away, the city of Titusville was going to blow away. And he said it was very, I don't think he's very clever, but that Titusville basically did that, did, did the mall, which is a signal to the community, and it was, and those of us that were involved with it knew that, certainly that was, that was the thinking on it, that we, we're not going to blow away. And it, and it worked. From that point on, you know, how many people came out with the signs, if you build it, and so forth and so on. And I couldn't help myself, because it was a pretty good crowd there, too. When he got done, I, I thanked him very much on, on behalf of the people of Titusville, and I said, "You got it right." I said, "That's exactly right," which, which he was. So it was a very interesting turn of events there, but I'll turn it back over to you.
It was great. As I, when we first got elected, I don't know if you remember, we got kind of bombarded with a lot of binders and information. So I've been kind of going back through that, and one of the things I found was some strategic goals that we had a consultant come and kind of help align for our city. And I'm now looking back at that as we get into the budget process, so I'd encourage you guys to find, I, I can't remember exactly what it was called, but it was just strategic goals, it was in a binded thing, I'm sure we have some at the city. But I plan to look at that in addition to our community conversation and as we go into the budget workshop next week, just to kind of get some more information since that was from a professional that kind of came in and looked at our city. Another thing, we started back up our Young Professionals Group for the North Brevard area, which I'm excited, we had our first meeting. We had a good group going and it kind of died out there for a little bit, and so we're trying to revive it. So we had our first meeting, I think, last week, and then we plan to have our second meeting at something that the chamber's doing, which is new socials with a purpose, that they mentioned at that longest table event, so March 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Titus Landing. So we're going to go to that and then meet directly after, just to kind of start our vision again. So if you guys know of any young professionals, the millennial age. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yes. Please, yeah, encourage them just to get involved, because I, I think we have a lot of momentum going right now, and I, I've seen some younger people getting involved. They were at co-launch, opening businesses in the downtown area. My last thing is, I will not be at the meeting, second meeting in March, because I'll be going up to Tallahassee with the Florida League of Cities. It's my first time going to this event, it's their Legislative Action Days, where we'll be meeting with as many of the legislators as possible about a lot of these home rule issues that are coming up. So I will keep you guys posted on that, it's only for two days, but yeah, hopefully we'll make some good progress with some of these.
Very important.
Yes. All right, I think that's all.
Anyone else? Seen anyone, city manager?
Yes, sir, just some dates of upcoming events. As council member Stokel suggested, the Strategic Planning Second Workshop is on March 7th at 5:00 PM, and it's hard to believe, but the student award ceremony is right around the corner already. It's hard to believe this year's gone by so quickly. I'd like to put a shout out for Saturday. Saturday started with events at 8:00 in the morning for the city and didn't end till the end of the chili cook-off, which was around 9:00, 9:30. So we had about 350 visitors to our city for the Ride It Down event. A council member participated in that with, with me, and I really do appreciate the hard work and the partnership of the Chamber of Commerce and the city to pull that off. It was a great event, well attended, and followed by the chili cook-off in the afternoon.
And one brag, second place.
Chili?
That's right.
Yeah.
You had the best one, why didn't you get first place?
I think we ran out.
You did run out, I remember.
I mean, yeah, well, yeah.
Well, I can tell you, it was really well turned out.
Yeah.
And very successful. Everybody had a great time, and it seemed to be enjoyable, it was a lot of fun, and the vice mayor was emceeing and.
And judging.
A little bit.
You did great, you did great.
We're still cutting votes.
That's right. Okay, anyone else?
One more item, sir. This past week, went to St. Augustine to receive the Titusville Police Department's accreditation for the next three years, very proud of the hard work that goes into the accreditation. Observed the panel that the, the chief and his team went through early in the morning, and then later on in the morning to get the validation of a outside agency peer review of our processes, and it was well received, and it's a big deal for three years, this is our second accreditation. So hats off to all of our Titusville Police Department, who keeps us safe every day, and for the hard work of the team that earned the, this accreditation again. So congratulations.
You're here, that's very good. We're proud of you.
May I have a seat?
He's still waiting.
City attorney, anything?
Yes, sir.
If not, I guess we have accomplished our mission, I declare this meeting adjourned.